Educating, informing, serving. Fact TV, keeping government honest. You're watching a Fact TV presentation of the Town of Grafton Select Board Meeting.
All right, so let's call it over. You need to order that. You want to say four forty-nine, fifty-nine?
No, it's at five o'clock.
Oh, it is at five o'clock? At the Grafton Town Hall on October thirty, twenty twenty-three. A motion to adopt the agenda. So do we have seconds, somebody?
Okay.
Any objections, any further discussion on the agenda? If not, all fair to say aye.
Right.
opposed? No, so now we have. We have, we have to adopt the rules of procedure for this vicious storm hearing. It's technically in place on Thursday at ten a.m. And did anybody get a copy of the rules?
Yeah.
Okay, we have, we have, since we've been operating out of this, that we really have not had an official adopt, so if there is, if there's no questions or concerns, somebody make a note into the doc. He's the featured for vicious dog. This is what more you stood out roughly, you know, Friday. Yeah.
But you also sent something from Saturday.
Yeah, but that this was said.
So somebody might make a note here.
I'll make them, I don't, I don't know too much about it. It shouldn't be written like this or not, so yeah.
We can't count, we can't, this, this is, this is it.
I can say I pulled this from the LCT and it was a model and I just adjusted it to Grafton specifically. So all of the wording has been drafted by the LCT.
Again, knowing so little about it.
Neither of us do, if this is a war that's on, that we have to do.
Yeah.
And even though we, we, we have to follow it, you never had a phone in common.
Yeah, yeah.
I'll second, I'll second your thought. Okay. I, I'd like to limit discussion on this because this is a very serious hearing. Unless somebody has any questions about the actual document itself. If not, all fair to say aye?
Aye.
Right, opposed? I'm assuming Kathy yours.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. All right, okay, so that's done, so I'll sign that thing later. Okay, so now we're into the budget. You, you understand what we have in front of us. Tim took the time to do a, a budget based on the two man and the two man crew. So what we want to try to accomplish tonight is to get through it all, if we can. And then that'll be a tentative budget and we'd like, Tim and I would like to schedule another meeting in December just in case something comes up that is unexpected or changed so that we can go ahead and make the changes to it before it's Kim actually puts it to bed. So who wants to start?
So all four man budget. If we go with the four man crew, there, there will be some savings from other areas after our discussion with Mike on Kathy and I's discussion on Mike on Friday. One thing for sure is on page three of six.
This is on a four man crew budget, right?
Yeah, four man crew. The hydrant snow removal. And then the, and then the town hall, the hydrant removal, I believe it was eight hundred dollars. And the town hall snow removal is twenty-five hundred dollars. Mike agreed that the crew, the fourth man, that they would, the highway crew would assume that these, as we discussed. Page three of six. That's thirty-three hundred dollars. And then on page four of six. Mike said the, the way he'll do it in the winter backfield, so operate the two man shifts. And he thinks it was going to significantly reduce overtime. Right now we have fifteen thousand budgets for overtime. You could probably push that down to like a ten thousand.
What did he say, operate in two man shift?
He said if they have four, they could do it in two man. They could do, if, like if it's a bad bad storm, as opposed to having people working eighteen hours, do it in shifts. So that way people aren't working crazy hours, you're not going as much overtime.
Very hard for two people to get around and keep the roads clean.
Well, it, it's only, they were, they were used the fourth guy to, you know, use little truck. But it's only like these really severe storms where they're having to work all through the night, you know? Letting people get some sleep, everybody was talking about.
Well, one thing I wanted to bring up last time, are we hiring a fourth man that has sustained qualifications as the ones?
He would, he would, Mike said he would like some of the C D L, even though we talked about, you know, they don't necessarily have to have one, he would like some of the C D L.
You're gonna have a C D L, but I mean, we hired somebody that could run the grader, could run the loader, run the back and all that.
He would, that's what he would like to do, hires for money of all his life. Now let's be ready to go and work.
Yeah, well, it kind of happens, you see, I guess why they ask that is if you hire somebody like that and you put that guy in shovel of hydrants, then I don't think that'll go over very well.
Yeah, well, I think he said, he didn't say the fourth guy was gonna do it, he said the family would take it. And he said, but that, that one person could now take, for example, in a snowstorm, one person take a pickup truck and use that on the side streets to make it, the roads clear quicker. So we could probably just overtime.
Were there any other savings you showed you?
Yes, that, and then on page, page five of six. He called Kathy, asked them on tree removal, which we didn't talk about. And he said they could do that, said they could do the tree removal.
They could do what?
The tree removal on page five of six, that's two thousand dollars budgeted for that. And Mike said they could do the tree removal. There's no reason why they couldn't do it, Kathy asked them.
I think that might be a subjective number because it depends where the tree is. That could be a tough.
I'm not gonna do it if it's why isn't.
Right, right.
But we don't pay for that either.
And then, I don't really know how, how, I wish, Mike is here, if we could ask him. For the gravel and the sand, right now we got thirty-five thousand dollars for gravel and seventy thousand for sand. He said with the fourth person, they could do the trucking themselves. I don't know how much of that cost includes trucking for the gravel and the sand. I don't know.
Do you, John? I don't know, I would probably break down laws. We did, we did it out one year because we picked it up and then we decided that. Then we had it delivered.
He said with the fourth person, he could do it, Mike could do it himself. So there will be some savings, I just don't know how much.
But it, but that adds to your fuel and your maintenance.
Yeah. It's still overall would be less expensive, I think.
Another, another thing, I don't want to be negative against the fourth person, but I just wanted it, third way to understand. We have kind of put off the purchase of that one time because it doesn't get used that, that much. And now we're gonna put it back in and use it a lot.
What do you use it for? What are you using that time for?
They're ready for small jobs.
Kitty Hill or, or what that is.
And then, and then.
It's used a lot. And then they use it, Kathy, when the mornings, they, they ride the road with it to see if there's a storm because then the trees down. But if you're gonna put it into service, it's gonna be more of expense and then the, the truck is five years old, I guess, somewhere around there. Is it old at all? Yes, it's, it's up to replacement and we put it off, Kathy budget, because it's not used that way. And now you're gonna start use that, so you're gonna waste some of that against your savings.
Yeah. So that's, that's what I have, Kathy, anything else? So that's what I have, is potential savings from a point.
Are they, did they talk about they're not gonna follow the village park, was pleasure? Was that a good statement?
I, I, I see, I was supposed to be my view, but I, when I went over the budget, I started with one other thing, village park, village park maintenance. I just don't know, I didn't ask them about that.
Well, the, the maintenance was more for any material in case there was wash outs and everybody felt last year that there should be something in the line item. But I know that they have a hard time following that area and have gotten stuck in worse times. It's time consuming, so when it comes time for you talk about the four men and how you're gonna split two, I don't think they'd be doing that anymore.
Yeah, I don't know.
They should go. Well, the one time would be going.
Or even get stuck well. It's a good place to be dwelling when nobody's really going up there.
What are they using to plow it if they're getting stuck?
They've used, I'm assuming one of the bigger trucks.
That's what they were using.
Yeah. It's not an easy task out there and nobody's done up there to do it. And if they're gonna search you, they can search you into it.
Yeah, I didn't ask them about that.
So which one do we want to go with the four man to work our numbers to make sure we're all on the same page?
Is there, other than the savings that you, you outlined, that you guys have a discussion where they can maybe do more like dead trees along the road? That's true. No, 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 I, I, I don't, the tree removal was, if trees fell down in the park or something like that, I'm talking about they'll, they should have more time, so if there are some dead trees or branches that are gonna be, they could, they could do that. I mean, Kathy, Kathy asked, and wash the car trucks more often and things like that, that, that will save on maintenance.
Yep. We talked, we talked about all the.
And clown out here, anywhere.
It seems to be like with a fourth man, it's gonna add a little over a hundred thousand dollars to the budget. Yeah, it's.
Ninety thousand.
Close there, isn't it?
Yeah, it's close to it. And then what I, the note I had here was that it will save. He had, the note I was thirteen to fourteen thousand on trucking, on the sand and gravel. With the fourth man.
Actually, what's, what's, I need some prices.
Yeah.
What, what is it delivered, what is it not?
I, I, that's why Mike needs answers.
Might forget that.
For ballpark figures, what's the bottom line?
It's gonna be more, it's obviously gonna be more, it's gonna be what? Seventy thousand more, seventy-five thousand more?
So you're saying a hundred thousand dollars even after the savings?
No, no, that's before the savings. You incorporate the savings, you're looking at probably seventy-five, eighty thousand dollars.
Plus.
I mean, that's not including what John's talking about, maintenance, just what's the line items on the budget, is what I'm.
If you go along with those line items, but in other places where you're gonna do anything, you're gonna have to add to. If you're gonna, if you're gonna do all your sand, you're gonna have to add to your fuel.
I mean, either way, if you add a fourth person, you're like adding the fuel and maintenance, right? Because there's more things operating.
Yeah. Four, four rigs operating versus three.
But you also have to think about one of the reasons they're gonna get more work done, but also the safety issues. They need to work with four people under the tree. If two people are flagging on the team and one person's doing the work, it's not.
Here's all the things, Dan's first, said that they'll have more people to plow, they can get the pickup, plow the streets and side roads, cut down on overtime hours, two people timed during heavy storms, help with doing grant work, which I guess takes up a lot of their time, help with ditching. They can run two trucks as opposed to the one. More, they can do more mowing, more grading, they can do the weed whacking. Agree to shovel the hydrants, agree to pile in front of the town hall.
I don't think they actually, the trees, they thought. I don't think they actually finished all of them, we'll say more, because I know they didn't do, they didn't do little town. No, they're growing off the road so they can grade. They didn't complete this year, they didn't, well, that was a flood, that was a problem.
It rained the summer.
But we have to make a decision, how you want to go through it, whether we want to do the four or we want to do the three. Because if we do the four and we change our mind, we, we can always go back and, and change it again. Question is which one do you want to go to and which one you might want to change. You're talking about going to the four in that budget? Either one, but I mean, if you do the four and then all of a sudden you decide that you don't want to do the four, then we can have that other meeting in December and we can go back to the three man. When you're talking about a fourth man hiring this, this year, you're gonna add sixty, seventy thousand dollars to the budget right off? Of course. In a budget we haven't got. I understand that.
Well, the final numbers for the budget with the four man and all the changes that Mike made and all the changes we made and the fourth person, it's a hundred and fifty-one thousand, one hundred and five hundred dollars.
Hi, from last year.
Increases from last year. So that's with the increase in the gravel, the increase in the sand and the new hire and their benefits.
And, and so that, based on what is it?
What, what, what is that, oh, that's from last year, I see.
Right, compared to last year's.
So what is it, fifteen thousand is the cent?
About seventeen thousand.
So how much, how many cents would that be then?
That could be like, I wanna say is it eight cents at least?
Let's see, on the safe side, say nine.
Yeah, eight point eight.
Yeah, so nine cents, nine cents. A hundred, it'd go up.
Eight point eight eight, depending on how much the maintenance charge ought to be.
And without, without the third, without the, the, with the third man, what would, how would, would the increase be?
I wanna say fifty-two thousand, three hundred and eighty.
Right. So that's, what is that, how many cents is that on? Six.
Three thousand, three cents.
Three cents. So that'd be a difference.
Two thousand. So the other thing to consider too, depending on when you want a new hire to start. Do you want a new hire for the winter months starting on December first? Don't forget it's gonna, it's gonna impact the budget they're sitting in right now.
Exactly.
So for sixth month, I took it from December first, in the scenario, that's thirty weeks. I did it whatever rate we talked about as an average. By the many beaners, and say they're gonna take the highest healthcare package that we offer, we could have an impact of fifty thousand, four hundred and forty-seven for the remainder thirty weeks of this fiscal year.
Yeah, and that's a big impact.
So.
And that's, how much is the person, like twenty-five dollars an hour?
Twenty-four. So that's also, when Kathy was asking what we have for money for this year, we do have on a sign with two hundred and fifty-nine thousand. Okay, so if we chip away at that two fifty, we actually, we still have the one that haven't paid for it, which is probably this year gonna end up, if we don't get it for the end of this fiscal year, it won't really that. But in reality, when it all comes around again, we're just gonna chip into that two fifty-nine. Because we won't be in a deficit and that's why we have it.
In reality, you really should start, if you're gonna do the fourth man, you can start it when the new budget comes in with that.
Or you got the winter hunts.
But we have the money, but we do have the money.
Yeah, it, it's in the on a sign.
Okay, so we have the money to look, and that's, and they would like it for the winter.
Since we hired a guy now, and this gets voted down in the late fall. That's what we're having.
No.
That's, yeah.
Well, that, that'd be kind of ugly.
Yeah, that was the other thing I was gonna bring up because if it gets calmed down and you probably hired them, you have to find another way to trim your budget.
Yeah, I mean.
To get the public.
In all fairness, it's very easy for us to pick here and do this, but we gotta, we gotta sell this to the voters. And in a year of inflation and high, this is gonna be a tough sell.
It is.
And it's very possible, since you're not gonna have a Australian ballot, you're gonna have a live, I mean, they very seldom could vote that down.
And then you'd have to trim.
Then you, then you have to trim somewhere else.
It's possible.
That would be the person who would have to be hired, that's a possibility.
I'm sure.
They'd have to take the job knowing that's a possibility.
Then I'll find everybody then.
Yeah, you might not find anybody, yeah, it's true.
Unless you can cut elsewhere.
Realistically.
Well, realistically.
Yeah, they, they can't, well, they can't.
Well, it's pretty.
They can't really, they can't tell you what they want cut out of the budget, they just want the budget cut out as a matter of fact, and then it's your.
Realistically, you could really, you really, you can't cut sand and gravel and you can't cut certain things. So you cut the paving and that would be cut out and you cut some of the other things you have. So you, so next week we'd be setting paving a hundred thousand and eight, a hundred and eighteen, whatever it is, you'd be paving fifty thousand just to end that. And I, I don't know if you remember, John, the year that they cut fifty thousand dollars out of the budget? Yeah, we had to go back and I mean, it was, it was a shit show. Well, stuff that gets cut is, it's stuff that really needs to be done. Yeah. So how long was that, John? Oh, well, it's probably back in the eighties.
Yeah, just, then you're twenty years, I don't know.
But town meetings in those days were, were, were contentious. Anyway. Who would you reach the guy? Yeah. But, but you have to remember, you know, this is a, a tough year for a lot of people. You know, and then you're gonna raise the, you know, I don't know what that does to the average tax bill, but you don't know what the grand list is gonna be. So you don't know whether it's gonna really truly be a nonsense, it could only be six cents if the grand list was up. And then you have the school circus, I guess that's another thing, which you can't control that. But I mean, if, if it does stay at nine cents, you know, it's, it's, it's more money on the tax bill.
But then again, you can, well, I don't care, as I say, people are seeing that increase all around. You know, there's inflation everywhere, how do they expect the town not to have.
Well, you can't, you know.
Well, there's gonna be some, if you're not that hot.
Yeah, but it's one thing to sit up there and sell a three or four cent increase because gravel and fuel is up. Well, to sell it, because you're adding, you know, another fifty some one thousand dollars payroll, that, that's a different sell. I mean, it's, it is. And you gotta remember, all of us are gonna sit up there and defend this.
So actually, you're looking at probably an eleven cent, eleven point seven six, because you have down to fifty thousand spin proposed during that.
It's even worse.
So you're looking at probably a two hundred.
Why, I, I didn't understand, but why?
Capital budget, they're, they're gonna probably present two fifty rather than two hundred, which is not in the general. And it's still.
And what, and what you don't?
That impacts the tax. What's that? Yeah, it would, it would impact the tax rate.
Well, what would the, well, if you include that, then with what you were saying earlier, then the tax would be, instead of the three, it'd be six cents, right? From eight to eleven.
Right, you're still gonna add on.
Yeah.
Yeah, that three cents on to our normal tax rate under one.
Yeah. And so it's a difference of five cents.
Yeah, but if you go, if you go to the nine, if you go to the four people, it's nine cents plus what?
Plus three.
Yeah, but it, it's a five cent difference.
Yeah.
Which means it's a four person difference, a five cent difference, adding the fourth person.
Yeah, okay. And, and, but you know, you don't wanna, you don't wanna cut the capital budget either, because if you cut the capital budget, that means you cook when it goes longer and then you have more maintenance and more expenses. Well, we, we did cut it in a way, because we, we talked about going to lease it instead of buying it. And that's saving us a lot of money.
Yeah. It does, we saw, is your, why does the lease say that your interest rate's lower on the lease than the financing?
You only have to raise so much lease it for three or five years and you want to raise that now.
Yeah.
If you don't, you're raising it all the time. And at the end of the five years, you won't.
Yeah.
Four years that I can.
I guess it's a gamble.
Well, and what you said, Jones, if we budget for the fourth person and we're all decided we don't want to do it, at least it's budgeted they look for. We budget for three, at least they look for, then they'll, they'll never act. And this is sort of what you're saying earlier.
I have a little fact, I do, because I did this for years with three people.
But that is not viable.
What?
How long was that?
And it's, but that, that is changing. The mileage, the mileage has not changed.
There is a lot of.
There's a lot of grabbing work and there's a lot where the state is requiring.
Not, not really, really, all that, the maintenance of the road hasn't changed a whole heck of a lot. Actually, actually it's better, Kathy, because in those days, they had ten wheels with, with the, with the wings. We went to ten, we went to save mine.
Yeah.
And I didn't have those then.
And obviously, I, I don't, Kathy and I know the experience, you know, all we can go by, Mike's calling us and he's saying it's different now, but that's, he said it's a lot more work involved now, it's the grant work and the storms and, you know, that's all.
How, how do we make out with, with the, working eight hours instead of six?
As far as switching the time?
Well, no, was that switch, was that mentioned?
They did not, they did not want to switch, I mean, the, the two, the seven to three, which is what we asked about.
No, this is not switching, working eight hours instead of six.
And then they asked about eight hours, they asked.
We asked about the question, starting at seven, like opposed to six, which is what I had been saying. Yes, and you made, yeah, he said that would be a total nonstarter. Said the people over there are asleep.
And said not gonna work.
No, no, that's what we asked, was starting at seven as opposed to six.
No, no. I'm talking to them, they work right now.
But we asked him about that, as far as what they do in the morning.
Yeah.
He said they work when they're there. He said they're in there, he said that maybe they'll have a couple, they're gonna work, they're gonna start praying to get on the road. You know, that's, I, all we can do is probably tell this to be.
Well, the, the thing I do, I, I can visually see this, so I know why I'm kind of saying this.
Yeah.
And they're not working, that's the whole. I just see that, that you give it so much more you can, can be done with the three people if they worked eight hours instead of six. You, you see the equipment going down through the town at, at noon, at twelve thirty.
I think there may be one person that does that. I think, I think Mike and both of you are up there working. I mean, maybe they stop and grab a sandwich and they get back on the truck, but.
Well, you're like, you're like. Well, I don't, I, you know, I don't, we have to, we, we can't sit here and talk about this forever. So either we have to go with the four or the three and then revisit it if we can figure on. I just, I just know that it's gonna be a tough sell.
I think it's gonna be a tough sell too. One thing that I know, not a place to talk about, but for the time, given the makeup of this crew right now, thinking of the future, how we're gonna build and keep this going, like the A T is and everything else. I think that's one of the big, bigger points to get fourth guy aside, breaking somebody in for the future.
Well, I mean.
You know?
I mean, you can always try, you can always go with the four, if you get voted down, get voted down and then, then you got, you got the consequences, and you gotta cut the budget, that's all those do. You have no, you have no leeches, that's it. And then you can decide what you want to do next year. But once you go, once you get the four man, it's gonna be hard to go back to three if they're that.
Oh, good.
For sure.
Yes, John, when you were born in, around, yes?
How many years?
How many years?
Nineteen.
So is it all at six to three? The six to ten?
No, not all the time, it, it was changed. I don't remember when, but there was a pathway in between.
So what, so under your guidance, what was it, or was it later, earlier? When they left or? Like, when did they start? Did they start at six and then?
Yes, I had, I had something to do in the morning.
And when did they leave, at two?
Two, yeah, no.
So it's us, six to ten, that's the biggest.
Same, same hours we have now, but it wasn't all the time, I don't see it. I don't remember, but it was a lot of good. It was like setting this three year. So what do we need to vote on? What do we need to vote? We just gotta decide which one we want to go.
We got to do it as a four man, that's what we, we've had all our meetings with these guys and.
I, 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 I hear Kathy, I like her.
We have to change it, we change it in December. They're, they're really counting on the fourth person to help them just through the winter.
Also, I ran into Mike quite a few times last winter and they were struggling.
But they're getting older. Go through, through. Here's my recommendation, you know what the form they have. Hey, look, look, take my recommendation, you know what the form they had. And then let's all sleep on it. Maybe let's a word out or something, then we can see what the reaction, you can always go back and change it, it's simple before. When is it done, I mean?
I'd like it by mid-December.
Yeah. So.
That means.
So we have until, let's say, at the fifteenth of December or something like that, we could set a budget meeting, whatever that date is, or close to that date, and then put the file on.
I'm not against it, I just.
I'm not against it either.
Results by doing it.
I'm not against it either.
I like your spore. That's, I, I do too, John, I mean, I, I'm with you completely. But I, I think I, I have a little more experience in, into this, that I can see what's gonna happen a little better than the rest of it.
Oh, you definitely.
I'm only expressing what I think is gonna, but, and it doesn't, I hope it doesn't, I hope it works fine.
I think you have to really also look at the last couple of years of the intensities of both these storms. And they got hit twice this year, twice last year. Um, it's a lot, it's a lot. You know, manually how they have to do stuff and also manually, so.
One thing that was interesting, that was, uh, the L C P thing I went to. That, that was a consistent thing, is about the road crews. And how, how much trouble all these towns are having for road crews, and what about you, we don't?
So you mean, getting, getting people, keeping people, yeah. Well, we, we, we pay a good salary.
Well, that's fair.
And, and, and we have very, very, and I say very, very good benefit.
Yeah.
But so, John, I'll, I'll, I'll follow your advice, I'll, I'll, I'll drop in there some mornings. And I guess it's part of our job of being the first to go to the meeting. I'll drop in there some mornings, sit there, do it.
Yeah, it's.
Yeah.
I, I, I do quite often.
And we have asked. Before Seth was here, I wanted. We have to ask them, please step on that whiteboard, put a schedule up there, what needs to be done, what's done. What do you need a different page on?
Yeah, that's a big thing, I can't, they had one though. I know when it might work for me, that with him and Danny, that's what they wanted, they had to have a schedule.
Yeah.
And now it's, now it's disappeared.
I mean, I, I, I run my little, I have a little farm business, and I have a whiteboard in my barn. And every, every, uh, uh, every Monday, I put down what we have to do.
Yeah.
And when we get it done, we erase it. And if you can't finish it because of rain or what, then you do something different or something you have to, but. There should always be some kind of, uh, they should have some kind of a plan for the week.
And some stuff you can do automatically, but you can still put it on board, you know?
Yeah.
Clean your rig, check your oil.
All right, so, so, let's, to an older man. All right.
All right, so I have stones to like, oh, that's awesome.
Hang on, let's stop there in a minute.
Ready for one, okay.
Okay. No, I, I'm, I'm, look, I don't, I don't, I don't care about the money. My concern is that. With the exception of rich, all, a bunch of old people on the board. There's a lot of work on this board, I mean, you spend a lot of hours. And I don't know what the other select boards around the area get, I mean, it'd be interesting to see. But, I mean, if you want it, for a thousand dollars, and you attract somebody who's in their twenties, thirties, or even forties. That has a family, to give the kind of time it takes for a thousand dollars. And we haven't made, this hasn't been increased since, I don't know, nineteen fifty, maybe? Seriously, I, I, I mean, I know it's, it, it, I, I don't care for myself, I'm just, to track other people, this, this. I've been on the board now eighteen, nineteen years, and John's probably beat me. It's a whole different work than it was ten, fifteen, twenty years ago, you didn't do a half this work. Now everything's so complicated, and, and, and takes.
But I think it's pretty squamber, this amount. I don't check around, is there anywhere from a thousand to fifteen hundred?
That, uh, it's in that V L C P book?
Yeah.
When I was looking at the road, that was always, that's the first thing.
Okay, well, that's fine, leave it alone, I'm just, I bring it up.
What you gonna raise it? What you gonna raise it?
Mine?
Yeah.
Yes, I, I pointed out, so I said, people, why do they do it?
Honestly, as far as I'm concerned.
I made my speech.
I've all cared since I've been living in town, you've been eliminated as far as I'm, I'm being serious. Yeah.
Well, I never took, I, I never took it either before, and then I got criticized for it.
Oh, no, it's all right.
Yeah.
All right. But that's a good point, Joe, but, you know, I think that, uh. Just taking some experience, it is being fire chief for all those years. They couldn't pay me enough for what I was actually doing, you know?
I know, all right, so that's okay, go ahead.
Okay. Town administrator, forty-eight, seven, that was with her increase. Uh, and, and, and again, I need to bring this up. I know it's probably under personnel, but I did put, bump up for a possible July increase.
Okay.
Okay, so all these reflect that already. Um, administrative officer, I have that at a thousand.
What is that?
Yeah, what is that? Administrative officer does a lot of detail where it meets the.
Oh, so.
So anything you're throwing at Bill that actually Morgan could do, would benefit to put it under Morgan, then to throw the bill.
All right.
Does he bill you by an hour, does he like go by an hour for that, or we just pay him a thousand dollars?
By the hour, it was thirty-three hundred dollars last year. That we paid him.
Yeah.
Is that, that forty dollars an hour? Forty dollars an hour.
Yeah. Slowly, we're getting away from that.
Yes, we are.
Yeah? Yeah, now.
We down to, down to a thousand?
Yeah, the, the actual, you hear what the actual was?
Yeah, but we're good, but Morgan is picking up more and more of it.
That was, that was.
That's a very different one, there's a total last.
What the town paid him.
Right, well, we, we, we paid him actually under several different categories, so, yeah, he.
But we gotta make, that's, part of that was to train Morgan.
Right.
Playing in commission, had a, we had a line on it before, and there.
Yeah.
So moving forward, that thirty-three is going to be all about to a thousand, yeah, one percent.
Yeah.
Yeah, right, yeah, all right.
It, it's right there. My, uh, the treasurer is twenty-eight, five. Uh, the clerk is thirty-three, six, it's just kind of a swapping, you know, I mean, it, it comes to the same dollar amount, except I just moved one for the clerk to the treasurer, so we can start leaving it in the mouth, because if I should ever walk away. It'd be really hard to get a treasurer. Um, assistant clerk, we've got the same. Listers, they said it's the same, auditors, fifteen hundred. Justice of Public Funds, three, constable, a thousand. Um, delinquent tax collector, we put a number in there, even though it's not the new principal. Um, health officer, twelve hundred, horsepower award to state five. So the social and the park guy, that changes as the wages change, so you see increase thirteen, five.
What were you gonna, sorry, you went so fast at it. Uh, the constable, now that we took the dog off, should push it away from him, was that something that we need to?
Just to let you guys. What is it doing? Um, yeah, if there's trouble in town, you know, we can attend to that, um. Maybe help Ashley, if she's got an issue like we've had, she'll get someone involved, but not as much as when we had the Alan.
Does he do Alan Wade?
We know.
But, but, but if you look at, if you look at the, the hearing that's coming up, he did something for that.
He, he was constable, it was before we had, before we had. So that's why he was so involved in that, but now we contract.
Why you wanna, you didn't have to ask him, reduce him to five hundred, and then. You met, I, I agree with that.
Does he have a badge?
Yeah.
No, no, he hasn't taken any, some constable pen and they can carry it, but I remember ours still count.
Yeah.
It's a basic. Like, uh, he should attend town meetings in case there's a, a problem or a riot arises, he's supposed to be controlling of it.
But the Japanese shows up anyway.
Yeah.
So did we contract him, or should he show up?
Okay, go ahead.
All right, so we're good there? All right, so social, thirteen, five, medic, three. Health insurance, twenty-five. There was an increase in the health insurance.
What was it?
Yeah, there was.
Five thousand.
Dental. Seven hundred. As we were mentioning last year, retirement, seventy-five hundred. Workers' tariff, eleven. Unemployment, two-twenty. Ballot clerk and town reports, I kept them all the same, nine. Uh, did go up on town reports in case, uh, our town reports come in. Increase in pension, thirteen hundred, five hundred dollars. Other expenses, office supplies, twenty-five, I left, postage, nineteen. That would be.
They're going up again.
And we're gonna try and be fine. Telephone, thirty-seven, coffee ear, seventeen. Computer programs, this is the one that I switched out, it says eighteen for last year, because that encompasses everything, now I'm breaking it, so it's only gonna be seven thousand for the programs. Later you'll see the I T in another place. Travel, three hundred, town officials, three, offices, three, doggy, fences, six. I have not yet heard if our B C O is gonna change, I don't know, still I left it with the. Preservation of records, a wash. Fire alarm systems, went up to three fifty. Hotlam records, um, I left that at two.
The last year was four fifty, four eighty.
The actual, we had some repairs.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, replacements. The cop and system, um, I left that at two, we also get a revenue on that, on the other end of that. For research. And also, control officer, this is where Ashley comes in, I bumped it to thirty-five, just to even it out. Listers consultants. So this is a new line item also. Um, I took away from the large eighteen thousand from the computer programs that we have there. And I'm breaking out, so it tells us what it costs for lifting, for our tax nets, that we have on a yearly basis, that's about thirteen hundred. We actually have some, um, picture comes in, it does our rollover for the grand list, that's usually about somewhere near fifty. Um, so hardest ask with thirty-two, but then with the grants. Computer I T. So this is just what it costs for all of our cybersecurity and everything, is like ten, seven. Liability, sixty, early cost, it's gonna be ten, seven, ten thousand, seven hundred.
Yeah, yeah.
So I broke it away from the eighteen and did it its own line. Liability, sixteen fifty, public official insurance, two thousand. Officers' bond stays at a hundred, no more kid in marriage, advertising, two.
Is that gonna shake one?
Well.
What is the advertising report?
If you advertise for a job.
Job, or something that, legal stuff, whatever.
Bidding process, if you have to advertise. Um, other professional services, I have fifteen hundred. What, what would those be? What are they? We, yes, we have that, bus line, services.
Was it building?
January.
No, no, I know.
Survey. Other professional services, we wanted to put in a slash. Alexa, that anyway. That's his home as far. When he was six, he was. Thank you for that one.
Well, if you can't find it, Kim, you can let us know.
Yeah.
We'll put a question mark there. You can also.
Legal expense, no, legal expense, five thousand.
Yeah.
That could change.
Yeah, John, the question comes, um, on the wastewater, if we have to hire and dirty. Which protect the town, it comes out of the ground, so that there's no pressure to protect.
Okay, um, professional auditors, eighteen thousand.
They went up a thousand, right?
Right.
They went up a thousand.
And other expenses, five hundred.
Well, we just spent a lot of money in that.
But we should have something that would remind me of them. Uh, let's see, this parks and recs, so we got the swimming pool, a thousand.
That's mowing, oh, right?
Pardon?
That's mowing.
Yeah, that's mowing, this is mowing, this is all the mowing. And the only thing we did on this is, which we have to bid it out. Is when, in all of these categories, and it doesn't make a difference how you wanna flip it around. We contract out for one complete package. And then we take it upon ourselves to figure out, out of that monthly bill for that entire campus that we get, we divvy it out per spot. Okay, so. We may say a thousand, but it's only because we think the swimming pool's bigger, Michelle and I, so we give it the bigger percentage. But it's all coming out the same, it depends on whatever we get for bids.
Yeah, so.
On our mowing.
We can, we can bid this out, maybe the, the guy who's doing the cemetery, maybe he'll do mowing next year too.
Well, what you would do is you're gonna put it out to bid, and they, they. Did not.
Right.
Right. Um. When do those bids go?
No.
They should be waiting soon.
Doing, yeah.
I think I have it on calendar for this next month.
Yeah.
Yeah. So all these are just kind of this swimming pool, a thousand instead, uh, town greens, we kept it three hundred. Village park, we moved it to fifteen hundred. Wilson Park, about five hundred, Wayne Park cost about five hundred. Um. Then we move, and so that takes care of all of the bidded. No, bidded, that's not right, um. That takes care of the bid, that was. Village park maintenance, that's what you asked for, uh, you brought it down to a thousand?
Mm-hmm.
In case something happens to the driveway.
Is there any money left in that, that cap? No.
Uh, they might have five thousand, I think in the reserve.
Okay.
If, if the town is doing this, why do we have one of the building back?
Because you guys said, in case they needed some material for the village park, I wanna know how much it costs separately to fix that driveway.
Who, who wants?
The park committee.
Yeah, but that was, that was the last year, but now, if you have money in the, in the reserve account from the, from the timber. Then they shouldn't pay anymore, that should come out of that account.
Well, what's in that reserve was for, like, to do the, that gazebo thing, or signs.
It's all supposed to be grass, that would become grass.
But I mean, science. It would be great, it's, this is supposed to be from, you guys tell me road material or anything.
I, I didn't, yeah, the highway. Yeah, you certainly need that there, the highway's gonna do it.
Yeah.
You guys gotta be put the line item in, I'll take it away.
If they need made it, it's hard, the highway.
I wouldn't do it, why would anything, what, what's the fifteen of the building going to start?
Well, that's what they asked to put in there last year.
Yeah.
Fifteen hundred, there's a thousand.
You, you're asking, that, so I was putting it down to a thousand this year.
Take it out, and just shoot for the, because now the problem is done, so if they eat gravel, they put a hell of a load of gravel.
Well, there's two different entries in the building, Paul.
Yeah, one is the mowing.
I want.
Yeah, it's structured, one is maintenance.
Yeah.
Well, so you come up in village park for mowing.
What do we mow, they go?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, the village park gets mowed.
You know, the, when you get, if you go up by a pond road, right off the, as you pass the, the last house there, there's a, the whole field, by the whole hillside, it's mowed.
You're gonna leave that.
Oh, like a long, uh, no, it's a big field.
I think it's a good seal.
Yeah.
On the left.
Yeah.
I have a fire on here, but it, yeah.
I remember the meetings.
All right.
Do they ever take that over with the state, what they're gonna do? Well, it's a mean tour, whatever, they got a grant for that. Yeah. So the maintenance was for more of the driveway and the parking lot. And then the structure is just because there's been some expenditures that will be coming out with the structures, and obviously you've got to.
Yeah.
Pay it from somewhere. Cemeteries, we came all the way down, um. The only thing is, the sexton gets fifteen hundred. Which is Austin. Uh, equipment and supplies, five hundred.[1773.64] And contracted services, that's, um.
That's good.
That's what we bid out, so it's down to fourteen. And that could change depending on what we get for bids.
Yeah.
The L C T, pardon? Uh, the L C T booth is twenty-five hundred. County tax sixteen-five.
Is it very definite now?
That was a big job, that's. We paid fifteen-six-seven already, so I put it to sixteen-five. Streetlight seventeen, library asked for eighty-five. Planning commission a thousand. Development review, seven hundred. Wynden Regional. Uh, development review board, so far, it's only ten in a year. Ten dollars.
You only pay, but there's gonna be a subdivision or something.
Right, yeah. Wynden Regional Commission seventeen, that's our dues to them. Emergency management, that's the generator at the school. And fifteen hundred hydrant snow removal, you had to remove that.
Taking that out.
Yep. Uh, mutual aid sixteen-five, that I had a little control over, so we won't know what that price is.
They go up everywhere.
Yeah, they do. The sheriff, okay, so this is the sheriff that, just through conversations over the last year, eight hours a month. For the twelve months. At sixty-two dollars an hour, I bumped it to ten hours just to, because everybody was talking, see how you guys would feel about it. So it came to seventy-two hundred, but we just noticed today, we got the contract and they're actually bumping from sixty-two dollars an hour to sixty-four. So, that should probably increase to more to seventy-seven than seventy-two, if you want them for ten hours, or we'll go back down to eight.
John has a good idea. And, and John's idea was, why have them ride the back roads? So they should just cut trade on the four hotspots, town, take it forward. Um, talented world, and I guess check the hill, right?
And why don't we patrol the little town cemetery?
Yeah.
A lot of patriots look for, for the old. There's nothing there, they have to run into something, they have to run into, then they can spend more time on the main roads, put it all in racks and heads.
When you see, I've seen a lot of state police driving around the back roads, I've seen them.
So, well, that makes the crowd happy, they're still staying at eight hours.
That's my next thing, at every meeting we have, we keep telling the crowd. Yeah, I. We are gonna do something.
I think we need to go up there.
I really do. I think people are gonna be affected, yeah, which we talked about a lot.
But the, does their time stack from when they leave rather, and get yours and start next year? So we take two and a half hours a week, you're down to less than two already before you even start to throw up.
Yeah, that's a question you have to ask them, when do they start, and they get here, should be when they get here.
How, how much money does the town get from the cetaceans today?
Uh, maybe, maybe a couple thousand.
You mean, is there a percentage breakdown of like?
Well, we should get more now, because we have the ordinance, and before, without the ordinance, they, they couldn't, um. We couldn't get the fine from certain stop signs and things like that.
But you haven't, you haven't less stops, because one of the letters from, from one of the, played out the valley. They said that the sheriff told her, they don't stop cars unless it's fifteen miles. Well, it's fifteen miles an hour, and they go six-five.
That's good, that's ridiculous.
Where did that rip?
Well, we're gonna reduce those speeds over there.
Well, we have to decide on that, uh, that's, so, I, I, I think you should increase that more, that's my personal feeling.
So you're looking at ten hours?
Yeah.
More, that would be seventy-seven hundred dollars, seven thousand six hundred eighty, that's just to board that, it would be add two more hours. Maybe at ten hours a month, but this doesn't take your.
Ten hours, not, not drive around back roads, should have got the four hotspots.
Okay, that's a cheat, all right, I'm good, I'm gonna change this to seventy-seven then, okay.
I don't think it's enough either.
I don't think it's enough, okay?
I don't, you, you.
I'm saying.
If you really wanna do it, you should make it either nine or ten thousand.
Well, with twelve hours.
That would sound better, yeah.
That'd be ninety-two hundred.
Why don't we put ten thousand, we can only go back and revisit it again, and we gotta meet with this guy, right, the sheriff?
Yeah, I, I have it on.
So maybe we can meet with him before we finalize the budget and, and, and see what he can really do for us.
Nine thousand two hundred and sixteen would be twelve hours.
Yeah, that's, that's.
This may be a scruple, but this, that particular line item, will that be on something, why?
No.
Yeah.
No.
Couldn't be, well.
I wouldn't do that.
No.
They tried to do that with the signage and it got built it down.
Oh, fourteen hours, man.
Yeah.
It's just that it was something I'll pride for, it's, I don't know if it's a bigger issue than being. That's, I would be in on doing fourteen hours.
That's a lot, yeah, I think the only thing, I guess we did, the question is, can they handle that many more hours?
I should ask, and the response was that they can increase, they have personnel to increase our contract.
That showed a big serious.
It isn't enough, but it's a lot better.
Yeah, okay, so you want to do ten thousand seven hundred?
Yeah, fourteen, fourteen hours is what?
Ten thousand seven fifty-two, so we'll go eleven thousand.
And then we should, with this extra, with extra, we should, we should get at least another couple, maybe three or four thousand dollars.
You ca- can't you actually tell them what you would like to see for a limit?
Say anything over ten mi- ten miles per hour, I'm for it, it should be thicker.
Yeah.
I don't want that fifteen.
Yeah. I give them any interstate, that they'll, I mean, I, I do seventy-three, if nobody bothers you, but if you do seventy-five, you might be in problem, yeah.
But that's what matters for insurance to.
So the cornet ban, three hundred. Down to tax maps. Eighteen, she went up on her tax map. Professional crazers.
What is the money, I, I know, is there still need that?
No, that happened event, we had to pay extra to them, the crazers, that one.
Yeah, but little days is doing anymore, right?
No, because they covers it.
Yeah.
I, I'm not saying I impose it, but it's like, what is the money for the cornet ban, what do we?
For what?
The cornet ban.
So they can survive.
The donations, so they can survive, if they play in the one, they march in all of them.
They don't raise war.
Well, they. Well, yeah, they don't follow.
You better say it for the local, but your whole people.
No, there are some panels on it.
They have a few original measures, I think.
Yeah.
From eighteen sixty, roughly.
Supplies, I have to. Um, insurance, two.
That went up.
Two, yeah, cause we only spent fourteen forty-one.
No, no, that is, insurance is about fire and all that kind of stuff?
It's live building, down building.
Only live building.
Yeah, it, yes, for the town, the town.
Okay, what about the insurance for the building itself?
That, that's it, yeah, it, that's all included in the.
But I mean, you know, something that happened in the building, do we have enough insurance to fix it, I mean, what they.
I think we're at a million something for, um, the value of the building. Um, key, two thousand, electricity twenty-eight fifty, repairs and maintenance, we left it at five.
Does that include the, the railing, or is that, that needs to offer or a good repressor?
Have a budget or a grant, that, that's possible, we can get a grant for that.
But we anticipated it within the comfort budget. Bonds, no removal, we're gonna check that. The janitor seventeen. Uh, paying it on principal and interest, you know, negotiate that one.
That's gonna be same anyway, right?
Yeah, the, the principal stays the same. And the interest declines each year.
Right, yeah, but it, the range is.
Yeah, yeah, it's a lot, ten to fifteen years.
Can, can I just go back to Janitor? He's not getting any kind of increase.
Only if you want to, he charges fifteen dollars an hour, two hours a week.
I told him the other increase, they're living with a C S. Nobody does.
I mean, he keeps the building gray, and nice if they didn't send us a couple of dollars.
I'm sure he'd appreciate it.
Building is much nicer than thousands.
Is it?
Places, but it's investment by.
I mean, it wouldn't be fifty dollars an hour.
Yeah.
Getting twenty dollars an hour.
What's he done, every week?
Every salary for two hours.
Yeah.
And if you're less vacuuming, yeah, he said, actually, there's, even though we've done it for over, we're using it more, there's a lot more work to do now. Yes, vacuuming them.
Thirty bucks, this would have been, I signed it, so, so now it's gonna get forty, so, you know.
Okay.
Guy, the guy gas alone.
Okay, what did you change after? It's gonna go up to twenty-five an hour, and I didn't change the dollar, and I'll figure out on you.
Four hundred fifty-two.
Okay.
Twenty twenty, twenty-eight, twenty-eight.
Oops. Ambulance, that stays the same.
By, by mistakes, it's names.
Uh, fire department, same, rescues, they get the same, humanitarian's.
So we don't know.
Nobody knows, but that's where it is.
Yeah. Well, that takes care of everything now that they're on the highway, we kind of did.
So the highway on the two thirty-four, it was with a fourth person, you're telling me to put overtime down to ten?
Yes.
Okay, I like that one. And temporary flaggers, five hundred.
I bet we can eliminate, uh.
Where, where, what is that under?
The highway salary, up the top of the page.
Yeah.
So what's gonna happen is, I'm gonna have to revise the FICA and the M E D I. Because all of that is impacted by the overtime amount.
Okay.
So, those figures are gonna fluctuate, I don't know if you want me to go through them, so, but what I did do is. There's a percentage for the FICA, which is six point two on the overall of the, of the one that you just saw, two forty-nine five. Because we have to do flaggers, overtime and regular, at six point three for the FICA. And the M E D I gets down at one point four five percent, health insurance. Um.
Maybe remove the flaggers thing, I think.
Oh, yeah, I'm gonna remove the.
The oldest is gonna go up based on percentage.
What is?
I mean, all these numbers here are important, man. Yeah, that's right.
But it's gonna go down, cause it's gonna remove five thousand and.
Right, yeah, right.
But, the fourth man hired may not take ours.
Exactly, or they may be a single person, I did it benefit of the doubt and did a family, which is the highest.
That's good, that's good.
Um, dental eighteen, that's including a new person, it doesn't cost much for us to do for dental. Uh, retirement will bump up, uh, retirement is six point six two five percent that we pay our portion.
Does this include, um, the fifty percent, the fifty cent an hour?
It does, the two thirty-four above, I did fifty cents on all, except for the new person, okay. Um, workers' cap at sixteen-seven, unemployment, fifty. Uniforms, I bumped that up, because if we have a fourth guy, I divided, what, pretty, what it costs for three, add one more. At nine, and then the rest, I did not change, the rest is all what.
But you gotta change the treat removal rule and the, um.
Treat removal, yeah.
And, and the, the, the gravel and sand, I have a question, like, because I don't, I, maybe someone's got to talk to Mike about how it comes up with the numbers.
I'll talk to him. Yeah, I'll see if I can read Jackson tomorrow, when he'll stop, and, um. I can tweak those numbers, other than that, I didn't change anything on his part. I left it on.
The only concern I had, Kim was telling me it's okay, is the fuel, because with this. Prices going on in the Middle East, fuel is gonna go up, and now you got another, you're gonna use the equipment more, so I don't know if that number still is okay, but. I think we can see what happens by December, and if the, if the fuel prices are skyrocketing, then maybe we have to put, take care, so we added, what, forty percent to it?
Yeah, my guess, so we're at, what is it, thirty, uh, fifty, fifty thousand compared to thirty-five thousand.
If you decide to pick up your inferior, you're not gonna go to Eastland, you're gonna go to the old stall, or you're gonna go to. Jamaica, which is, is bad.
Yeah. Eastern's over.
I think so, yeah.
He said, he was talking about, he's not a Japanese, but I'm familiar. Yeah, well, that's, that's, that's more of a wear and tear on the truck.
Yeah, so you're gonna, when, when you ask if delivered drives, uh. Versus let's get that, you're gonna try to find out, how much is it gonna cost us to go get it?
Yeah, I think, I, I think, because you're not selling the fuel, but the tires.
That's the last thing, he, he was saying that they could get it.
Well, I'm sure they can do it, but, but it, it adds, it, it, it might save on the freight, but we have, but it, it really doesn't. You don't save it on the gas and, and for free, you know, in the, I, I.
I, I almost thought he said it was a huge savings. It was huge, yeah.
Well, let's see what he said, let's get his, let's get his.
And one of the reasons that he was saving is because of the price of material, is probably twice as much as what he's paying.
You think so?
For a truck or a trailer, bring it out there.
Well, I worked on thirteen, fourteen, and jumping cost, but there's what we've got, so.
Nothing difficult, you can figure out what the miles per gallon averages, how many miles do you wanna travel, and you get a pretty good idea of what's gonna cost you next. Cause right now, you're probably, you're probably traveling no more than four miles, five miles, yeah, the, the, Eastman about.
So right now on the pool, we're right in line at twenty-six percent, and we're, and we're recording all the way through the year. So we're right on target. That was current today.
And then, what, what we'll do is, can you allow them to sit down and get a date? Uh, when we get interest in the, after Thanksgiving, and, and we set it as, uh, if we needed meeting. If we wanna change anything.
Well, we would, because you would have to decide as personnel and select what you're gonna do about.
That, so, I mean, that's what we should, we'll set a date.
You should do that first, and then.
But, we also, if the law on the fourth man, for flowering and stuff for December, we start. Putting a thing out, for highway, right? Should do it, yeah.
Yeah, well.
It's not a Wednesday.
No. So, you say that you, you have to have it by the fourteenth?
Fourteenth, is that what, is that?
The fourteenth is Friday, the fifteenth is probably some.
It would be nice, because that.
So why don't we have, why don't we have a budget meeting the week of the eleventh?
You think it's a matter?
Yeah, December.
And you guys will make your decision, your final decisions, or?
Well, I think I can take it right now.
I can do it any day, except, um, the twelfth.
We're gonna have a fourth person in December.
Yeah, I need to.
You want it inside right tonight?
Yeah.
I don't think they have to, right?
Yeah, but we still need this other date, just to go over the budget in case.
All right, we said December, what, it works for you?
Well, I think, I can do it any, I can't do it on the twelfth, you can do it the eleventh on a Monday, like, can I, do it at five, five hundred and eleven? That'll work for everybody.
Yeah, would we wanna do it the same night as the select working, or?
No, we do it here, at five o'clock, at here, on the eleventh.
November or December?
For the final, so.
Just in case, you might never have to go do it, or please put it down.
Send that early.
Yeah, all right, so, what are we gonna do, not the four man?
Make the motion to fire fourth man and advertise. Start. In December.
So you made a motion that was going before Kevin?
Right, so.
But you have any comments?
No.
And to start advertising it. Immediately.
Yeah.
And how is it, it was kind of, the way you did the higher restaurant, it was convoluted. How are we gonna look at this guy? Because we had a committee, whatever, I don't know, I mean.
They need a committee.
People more bored of the shit they own hiring, it more hurt. Yeah, maybe a little.
And we're gonna be interested in jobs for teams and all that from that email. You get the job to suspend the truck operator, it's the same as um.
We've been doing some preliminary research about other towns too, so we have a bunch of like um. Very much ideas of what other towns have, are you guys for?
Who hired the person, who hired Kobe?
Well, that was, it was a convoluted way of, it was a committee and then the person, I don't know.
Why don't, why don't Kathy and I just meet with the person and the mic? Alright.
Do interviews that way?
I do, that would, that would. Get rid of a lot of.
Right, back and forth.
Back and forth, back and forth, sure.
Okay, well, yeah, good, let's have Mike cancel them for these.
Yeah, and then then you have, if you, if you guys narrow it down to two or three people, then I think then we should all meet.
I I think you you shouldn't limit it to this mic, because we're training somebody to stay forward, Mike.
Yeah, Kobe's gotta be there.
He's gotta be involved with this, so, yeah, David knows, Kobe does.
So what, Kathy and I will meet with the folks first. Probably give us a Kobe and Mike, and then narrow it down to two, and we'll all meet. Something like that.
Yeah, they will have a, you know, they'll have a meeting up here.
It's really critical on that, how you advertise it. And they should have a P D on, I think it should fill in with the description of the truck.
I'll have the personnel committee of who there is.
Why don't you, why don't you advertise it, C T D L, maybe, preferred. No?
We're gonna have it.
Yeah, can. Some of the town would be.
Town, county, Charlotte, and that.
So by the time the whole board sees it, basically gonna be up or down, oh, these guys are gonna take care, between you guys, Mike and Kobe. Then you're gonna bring it down, so we're gonna say. And it's all.
That works for me.
And I think Mike needs to look at whatever you have.
I mean, because before.
It was too much, it was just too much.
I don't think we should ditch, pay for hiring, like, you know, because that's what does in trouble.
But you don't have.
Yeah, that, that emotion on the score. There's no discussion about the fourth person, let's take a vote, everybody just take a take a vote. So all favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay. We haven't, the only other thing we have, that's it, there's no other, there's no other business, there's no.
Any public comment, is that people on?
Yeah, any public comment for the people who are on the Zoom meeting? It's not. Yeah, alright, so then next meeting, it's important that we all be here at ten o'clock, or before uh, to do this hearing. This is a a very formal hearing, it's very personalized, it has to be done in a specific way. And um, so, we're gonna have our attorney here. And the um. Complete the plaintiff, is gonna have, I don't know, the dog owner is gonna have their attorney here. And uh, we're gonna go through a kind of a, if you show that how it's to be done, that's how. Yeah.
So you have a time on what you're gonna do.
Yeah, right.
So, I figured you had a. Well, I didn't, I had a class that day.
No, I understand, it's okay.
I mean, if it's that important, though, maybe arrange it, but I'd rather not, that's.
The problem was that um, upon the request, we had seven, we didn't have seven days to act, so we were very.
Yeah, he didn't make it after.
He did think of you losing the job.
Yeah.
But, I get it.
But I I, it's important, but I don't think the problem, that's four votes. If it was only two votes or three votes, I think that would be an issue.
I mean, I do have time, but.
And uh, Kim, Kim, Kim sent out via Morgan this thing that we should be reading, what is? Yeah, and he's supposed to read page twenty-three.
Twenty-three, um, yes, yeah, you should have gotten.
That one section, right?
By twelve pages.
Yeah. Is is uh, is something that that would help maybe make the decision easier.
There's some examples.
Or harder, I shouldn't get it.
Yeah.
I don't know. Well, my, my question was to to Kim and um. And Morgan, was that apparently, the person who owns the dog has informed us. That she had made arrangements to have the dog. Well, yeah, I guess we shouldn't.
Let's not leave that discussion. Yeah.
So anyway, so we have the hearing, we're gonna have the hearing.
Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Yes, make a motion to adjourn. All favor?
Aye.